...will not come to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Clerk Golick will call.
Markovich here. Spatelli here. Vinesz.
Here.
Kalwinski. Ulacki.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Henosa.
Here.
Opinker.
Here.
Moving on to distribution of council scholarship awards.
Good evening and thank you for having us here again this evening. Um, once again, I'm Mrs. Myrick and I'm Chief Administrator for Academic Affairs with the School City of Hammond. And if you remember, I was here on April 28th and we pulled all of our scholarship winners for the Common Council Scholarship. So what we did after we pulled those, we notified the schools and we asked that each school have representation here tonight to have an administrator be present and then also to have their scholarship winners here this evening. So what I am going to do is I'm going to call upon each school to have their administrator come forward and to present the awards to their students. Um, the first school is Bishop Knoll and I did not see anybody from Bishop Knoll here this evening. Did I miss somebody come in? Okay. Well, the winner is Marquise Tarver. Marquise, is that you? Come on forward, I'm going to present it to you then. Congratulations, Marquise. And um, I need you to sign that and get that back to me. Since I'm not Marquise's principal and I don't know anything about him, Marquise, why don't you just tell us a couple of things about where you're going, where you're going to school and uh, some of the things you did in high school? Why don't you take a minute and tell us, please?
My name is Marquise Tarver. Uh, I will be attending the University of St. Francis in Fort Wayne. Uh, I graduated with a 3.0 and I played varsity basketball.
Are you playing basketball for St. Francis?
Yes, I am.
Marquise, I'm gonna tell you a little secret. I got my undergrad degree from St. Francis College, it was called at the time. So I graduated from St. Francis and I was also a cheerleader at St. Francis, so you'll have a great time there. Good luck.[177.01][177.01](laughing). Okay, our next school is Hast and I'm going to call Dr. Egan to come forward to award his scholarship.
I've got a form for her to sign also.
Do I speak? Good evening. Well, this is new for us because this is our first year to have a graduating class, so we're very proud to be here and be invited and we really are thankful that School City of Hammond and the Common Council has included us tonight. So thank you all, I'm very nervous for doing this for the first time and I'm actually probably not as nervous as Paige or Vicky. Paige told me four years ago when she came to Hammond Academy that she didn't know what she was gonna do with herself, she didn't think she was gonna go to college. I am so proud. She's gotten admitted to Purdue Cal and she'll be going to nursing, so congratulations Paige or Vicky.[223.62][223.62](applause). Anyone want to say anything?
No, I'm fine.[234.12][234.12](laughing).
Okay, our next school is Clark Middle School High School and the principal is here, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present such a, an award to uh, my students that uh, will help pay for their future endeavors and to further their education. So at this time, I'd like to call up Jacob Villapondo. And then uh, Ms. Picazza is here to accept the award for her daughter, Anice Picazza, so if I could call her up front, please. Uh, and I will accept the award for Laura Moreno. She couldn't make it today. Um, her employer wouldn't let her off. Too many people called off today, so she was stuck. Um, I want to uh, award this thousand dollar scholarship to Anice Picazza. Anice will be attending IUPUI, uh, to become a medical, a physician's assistant. So um...
Thank you.[305.12][305.12](applause).
Anice will be sorely missed. She was a hard worker, not only in the classroom but on the basketball court, uh, where she made some history there for Clark, so I do want to thank her and appreciate, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Jacob Villapondo. Jacob will be going to St. Joe's in Rensselaer. Uh, Saint, uh, Jacob will be studying biology where he hopes to someday get a job in uh, preserving the ecology and uh, possibly bringing back some of the natural habitats and restoring them to be healthy and uh, thrive so that they provide much oxygen and much needed resources to us humans here, so uh, Jacob?
And at this time, I would like to call up one of our deans from Gavitt Middle High School, Mr. Pinter.
Hello, I'm here and I'm going to present this award to uh, one of our students, Lorenzo Howard. Lorenzo's gonna be attending Notre Dame University. He's uh, accomplished quite a bit at Gavitt. He was the class president, National Honor Society President, Student Council, Natural Helpers, Spell Bowl Captain, Academic Super Bowl. I mean, it goes on, man. My man, he did a good job at Gavitt and we're very proud of him.[404.12][404.12](applause). And we have another winner, uh, Louis, Louis Ruiz. Louis will be attending Purdue University in West Lafayette. Uh, another guy was busy at Gavitt. Uh, he was in Ignite, Spell Bowl, National Honor Society, Natural Helpers, Relay for Life. He was busy at Gavitt and we're very proud of him. Thank you, Louis.[432.41][432.41](applause). Uh, we had another winner, Kayla Cousins. I don't think she's here. But she was also busy. She was going to Indiana University, National Honor Society, Natural Helpers, Key Club, PBIS winner and Relay for Life. She, we're really proud of these three kids that did an outstanding job this year. Thanks.[453.41][453.41](applause).
And at this time, I would like to call up one of our deans at Hammond High School, Mr. Schreiber.
Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, first one here, um, is Shanitha Shepherd. She's gonna be attending Purdue, West Lafayette and she'll be studying criminal justice. Uh, she's very active at, at the school, very hard worker. Uh, finished, uh, top of her class, second, I believe, right? Um, so a great student, um, and uh, just, just a great kid at Hammond High. We're definitely gonna miss her. Shanitha Shepherd.
Great.[494.03][494.03](applause).
Okay, and our next one here is Osiris Morales. Um, again, long list of clubs and, and uh, activities and uh, very, very, just very active. Uh, got along great with a lot of the teachers and um, uh, just a great, hardworking kid. Uh, another one we're definitely gonna miss, Osiris.[521.01][521.01](applause). And he's gonna be studying education and that's where he wants to go into. Last one here is Eric Schreiber. He'll be going to Anderson. Um, he's gonna be doing exercise science and uh, he will also be playing football at Anderson. Um, he's, he was at Hammond High for three years and uh, drove me nuts, so that's my son, so...[548.25][548.25](laughing).[549.25][549.25](applause).
And last but not least, I'd like to call up the principal of Morton High School, Mr. Greg Easton.
Greetings, President Opinker and distinguished council. It's a pleasure to be with you again. I'd like to introduce you to some more distinguished governors. And uh, and you know, they're so much more interesting than I am. I'm just gonna introduce them, give them their certificate and let them tell you where they're going and what they're doing. So, our first recipient is Jamila Musa.
Thank you.[588.62][588.62](applause). Um, my name is Jamila Musa. I am going to Purdue Calumet for four years and then transferring over to West Lafayette, majoring in pharmacy. Thank you.
Our second recipient is Shelby Rodriguez.
My name is Shelby Rodriguez and I plan on going to Purdue Cal for four years to uh, major in computer engineering and I played tennis for four years at Morton.[622.01][622.01](applause).
Our third recipient is Selena Torres.
My name is Selena Torres and I'm going to IUN for nursing in the NICU. Thank you.
And our fourth recipient is now with us this evening. His name is Christian Torres and he will be attending Purdue Calumet. Thank you again so much.
Thank you.
And once again, thank you for your support of our students in the City of Hammond so that they can further their education and I look forward to working with you again next year on this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Myrick.
Thank you.
If, if we could get all the recipients to come up here for a picture with the city council, we'd appreciate it.
If I pray this chair to the first one? One more, please? Nobody say Hammond? Thank you.
Thanks again, recipients, and good luck in college. Moving on, a presentation by Hammond Open.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Alvin Cheeks. Um, I headed up the chess tournament for the mayor for four years. This is Jermaine Rodriguez. He's the ambassador to the City of Hammond. He's represented the City of Hammond in China twice. Um, he has his airplane license and his helicopter license, so he's been a great asset to the students of Hammond and, and to this council for furthering chess and, and driving students to do further. He has a presentation.
I would like to present two awards today. One to Mayor Thomas McDermott Jr. Thank you for your continued support in the fourth annual Hammond Open and also for promoting chess in the northwest Indiana area. And then one also to Alvin Cheeks. Thank you for your continued support in the fourth annual Hammond Open and also for your promotion of um, chess in the northwest Indiana, Indiana area.
Thank you, Jermaine. And I, and I, I set Jermaine up, I said something next to him. I have one for Jermaine. It's tireless effort in helping the City of Hammond, helping the youth. Uh, this trophy is from the City of Hammond and this is for you, Jermaine, from the city. And uh, thank you.[857.41][857.41](applause).
Thank you, Alvin, and thank you. Congratulations, Jermaine. Moving on, reading of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
The motion to accept the minutes from May 12th, 2014.
There's a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Emerson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims, May 7th through June 4th, 2014, for council meeting, June 9th, 2014. Beginning with claims dated May 12th and ending with claims dated June 4th, claims number 2706 through claim number 3062, for a total of $4,478,183.84. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs to accept the claims. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I just had a question and maybe it's a typo. I've claimed 2725 and 2726, under uh, Department Officer Fund, we have District 64 on those two, but I, I'm not sure what that means.
Does engineer city halls, District 64?
Probably a typo, it's supposed to be District 4, or, or is it 6?
That's my question.
Are you making a motion to...
I'm just asking if someone could enlighten me.
Since you found that...
She found it?
The error, you need to correct it. You need to make a motion to change it.
Okay. I so move.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Emerson to change that 64 to a 6, second by Councilman Higgs. Is any discussion? Clerk Golick will call vote on the change.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kalwinski. Ulacki.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Mended version passes, eight, eight zero, one absent. Now claims is written. Roll call vote, Clerk Golick.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vinesz.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes. Claims pass, eight zero, one absent. Now, the public hearing is currently now open for ordinance 1416, 14R12, 14R13, 14, ordinance 1417, and ordinance 14R14. Anyone wishing to speak on either of these ordinances, please come forward. Anybody willing to speak on ordinance 1416, resolution 14R12, 14R13, ordinance 1417, and resolution 14R14? Floor is now open. Hearing none, seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Moving on to number eight, communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
First, I have a card for one of my constituents. Very interesting week. Says, "Councilman Higgs, I received your letter concerning the ornament and lighting. Thank you for being a councilman and doing your job to the best of your ability. Councilmen of the 3rd District, I really appreciate you and God bless and keep you. I love you with all the love of Christ. Please know that if I can forever just to support you and in your endeavors for your community, please feel free to call me Ms. Harris." Attention Hammond residents, in memory of the Hammond community activist, Honore Jill Senior, Smith was ill at Warner Funeral Home, funded an after-school program for 2012 spring semester at Maywood Elementary School of Hammond, that included the donations of 30 licenses for Brainware Safari computer software for the students. Brainware Safari is an award-winning software program designed to build learning capa- capacity by combining neurali- neuroscience with video game technology, strengthening char- character skills. Students using Brainware Safari are noted for making significant improvements underlying attention, memory, and other material processing skills that resonate improvements in academic performance. The Hammond students that participated in Brainware Safari after-school program were tested before beginning the after-school program and tested again at the conclusion of the after-school program using the cognitive ability test, COGAT. COGAT assesss students' abilities in reasoning for problem solving. Based on CAGAT test scores, the Maywood students showed significant improvements in their cognitive capabilities after utilizing the Brainware Safari program. Examples would be grade students, Aneisha Calvin, who initially tested at 34 percentile before using Brainware and improved her test scores to a 54 percentile, testing in the top 50 of the 3rd graders in the United States. For grade students, Matthew Mayberry intensely tested at 76 percentiles before using Brainware and improved his test scores to a 98 percentile after using Brainware. At the 98 percentile, students Matthew Mayberry tested in the top 2% of the 4th graders in the United States, an outstanding accomplishment. The success of the Maywood student using Brainware Safari was numerous and significant because of the success of the Maywood students, students using Brainware Safari. It was decided to expand the Brainware program and to provide funding for it. Patrick O'Rourke, President of the Teachers Union of Hammond, indicated his wholehearted support for the expanded use of the Brainware Safari program to benefit the students. Finding that the Brainware Safari program has been available for almost two years, yet the superintendent of the Hammond School System has failed to make a program available for our children. Mm, mm, mm. It is time to find out why our children have been denied the educational opportunity. Join us at the Hammond School Board Meeting on June 23rd, 2014, at 5:30 PM at 41 William Street in Hammond, and we request that our children not be denied their educational opportunities.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
We, uh, received a correspondence from Dr. Thomas Joel, 5943 Park Place, Hammond, Indiana, 46320. Dear Mayor McDermott, I've been trying to have the city remove a couch and mattress from my alley next to my house for over two months. Early on, I called code enforcement three times, leaving a telephone number each time I attempted to contact Kelly Kearney directly several times, but it has been proven to be an exclusive search. I could, excuse me, I contacted my councilman and he responded slightly over a month ago. I was, I was having my morning coffee when I noticed a homeless man was sleeping on the back of the couch. As I was and tired to talk to the man, tried to talk to the man, within minutes, three police cars arrived. One police car continued on while the four remaining officers attempted to rile the communication with the man. This went on for about 30 minutes. Finally, the drunken homeless man moved on. It seems as though we have funds to waste on police time, but not on removing trash from our alley? Once the episode was over, I called code enforcement again. I spoke with Michael Coles Jr., the District 3 Code Enforcement Office, who rudely informed me that he had been out in the alley, observed the couch, and that since the couch was typically not on the property of the apartment building to which it clearly belongs, it was my responsibility to call the public works to have it removed. I cannot tell you how mad I was when I was told to call another department after the city employee has been, has seen the situation and has not contacted them himself. I contacted the department who told me they could not do anything since it was an apartment building, it was a code enforcement issue. They told me they would inform the code enforcement office. After a couple of weeks, I called the code enforcement office again and at the time I spoke to Dwayne Donaldson's, who informed me that Mr. Kearney was on vacation. He also told me that the situation had been issued. Frankly, I questioned, one, has been issued. Most importantly, he told me he didn't care if I went to the council, city council, since people complain all the time. Well, and two weeks later, the couch and the mattress are still there and I'm going to the city council Monday night meeting. I will publicly add my voice to those who complain about your city government. On Tuesday, I will move the couch into the alley and mattress to the block of the alley. I am sure this is a violation of some kind and hope the new policy commissioner will send armed forces to enforce the law since I have announced my intentions at the council meeting. Mr. Mayor, you would not tolerate this near your house, nor will I. I have refused to use a few political contacts I have in the city to resolve this issue. The insider systems which seem to dominate politics in the city is only making things worse. This is a bad indicator for future state office holders. Any angry citizens, Hammond? Uh, Thomas P. Joel, Ph.D.
Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm just gonna elaborate on the fact that we did get, um, some dumpsters, well, I would call them recycling bins, but uh, I'm hoping somehow or another the communication gets to my constituents as to what they're supposed to be used for, because they're not really garbage cans, they should be used for recycling. Seeing that the department has been, um, actually privatized, uh, a lot of the, my constituents are confused as to whether or what to do with this particular can, but it should be utilized for recycling, not for garbage.
They actually, Councilman Higgs, they came with directions, what to put in and whatnot.
The problem is, they're calling me saying they don't know, why am I getting another garbage can? So, I think flyers should have actually went out prior too and that would have alleviated that.
Any other communication? Communications is now closed. Moving on to committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Bringing out 1416. Council is a whole.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vinesz.
And council is a whole will also be bringing out 1419.
Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Ordinance, third and final reading.
Ordinance number 14-16 sponsored by Councilman Opinker and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond, Indiana, designating a certain area within the city as an economic development target area for purposes of real property tax abatement. 2842 Carlson Drive in Hammond, Oxbow Landing, Lot 1.
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Move for final passage of 1416.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson on final passage of 1416. Any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Spatelli.
This is a 10-year incremented abatement, uh, for the new Hampton Inn that's gonna be built, the 12 and a half million dollar project. Uh, I was just wondering if I could call up Phil Talon, please? Uh, I was just wondering if I could call up Phil Talon, please? Phil, I have a question to ask you. Is this work being done by union workers?
It is. The developer, whose name is Nash Patel, met with the union and they came to terms last week, so it will be a union project.
Anything else you could tell us about this?
Um, the, the property itself, good evening, council. The property itself was purchased, uh, in two thousand nine, was right around the time that the economy, uh, started struggling. It became very difficult to get a loan through, uh, a bank for financing. Um, anyhow, fast forward to today, and the bank has approved financing for the project with the approved tax abatement as part of the financing package. Uh, it is a hundred-and-twenty-room Hampton Inn. It'll be their newest concept in this area. Um, it'll have approximately twenty to twenty-five employees, and, uh, we think it'll be a, a good development for that area and fit in very well with the other development that, uh, should follow.
When's it, when's it starting?
Construction should begin probably in August of this year, as long as everything goes according to plan.
Mr. President. Um, I understand, and I'm all for economic development, and I know you run that department, but my, as my tenure as being councilman, I have sent a number of letters, and Africa was helpful with trying to give me some direction on some of the properties within my district, but certainly, if you can do anything on Columbia Avenue to make it feasible and productive, it would be greatly appreciated, because that lot has been vacant for a number of years. I know it needs to be cleaned up. There are grants available that can be utilized to get it clean and try to get someone to develop it. That's, that's been my goal since I've been on this council, and I've sent letter after letter, and some of them haven't got a response. Africa has been helpful with responding, but I've sent letters directly to you as a director, so in the future, if you could please send me correspondence back, I understand you're busy and you have things going on, but I would appreciate that, sir.
Sure, and, and on Columbia, let me say, you know, we've tried different things to spur development at that site. We started with, um, putting up a sign, giving our name and phone number, our department, to try and draw some interest. Uh, we didn't receive very many phone calls, so we tried hiring a national real estate broker, um, and that was commercial advantage, so they currently are, are listing the property. I know they've had a few bites here and there, but nothing has come to fruition just yet, but obviously, it's just as important to us as I believe it is to you to, to see a good development happen at that site.
Not to mention the other two, you've got KFC been vacant for a number of years, they're dumping garbage in the back, and you've got the Bergman Building where people are standing there, whatever, I don't know, cars are there at night, I don't know if they're trying to open up a business, or you just wanna leave it vacant, I don't know. Try to give them an incentive to reopen or something, because something needs to be done with the property.
Yeah, I agree. We, uh, I promise you, we, we are working very hard to fill every lot that's available in the city or every empty building, um, so we will continue to work hard at trying to do that.
I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Talon. Any other discussion? Clerk, Clerk Golick will call on fourteen sixteen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski. Ulackey.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O'Pinker.
Yes, ordinance fourteen sixteen passes eight zero, one absent.
Ordinance number fourteen nineteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, and ordinance creating a new section of Chapter one twenty-one to require motor vehicle repossession agents who operate in Hammond to have a Hammond license and follow approved procedures.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of fourteen, uh, four, what is the fourteen nineteen? I'm sorry.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vanez for final passage of fourteen nineteen, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Um, currently, the state statute does not require reposessant, repossession agents to notify local law enforcement of their activities in their community. They are only required to, in our case, notify the Lake County Sheriff's Department. This ordinance will require repossession agents to not only have a business license at the cost of a hundred dollars, uh, they must also notify the Hammond Police Department within two hours of repossession with the identity of the repossession agent, their company, the name and address of the person in possession of the property, uh, the name and address of where they believe the property will be found, and a copy of the repossession order to the Hammond Police Department.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick will call vote on ordinance fourteen dash nineteen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski. Ulackey.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O'Pinker.
Yes, ordinance fourteen nineteen passes eight zero, one absent.
President O'Pinker, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Moving down to introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance fourteen dash twenty sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance for council meetings to begin with prayer.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move fourteen dash twenty, first and second reading by title, and refer to Council as a whole with the committee meeting scheduled on July fourteenth. Seeing that I won't be present at the next meeting, I will be at the school board meeting. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hannah Hosa for first and second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Item B, ordinance fourteen dash twenty-one sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance permitting ordinance number ninety-two forty-nine relating to weeds, debris, and other matter at properties subject to demolition.
Clerk Golick, could you read that in its entirety, please?
Whereas ordinance ninety-two forty-nine was recently passed by the Common Council to provide for cutting of offensive weeds, et cetera, on neglected or abandoned property in the City of Hammond, and whereas the Common Council finds that such conditions are also found on properties subject to an order of demolition, and such properties are very likely to cause serious blight affecting the neighborhood in which they are located. Therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council of the City of Hammond as follows, ordinance ninety-two forty-nine is hereby amended to provide as follows. Though provisions of this ordinance shall apply to and be strictly enforced as to any property subject to an order of demolition, in addition to grass, weeds, vegetation, and undergrowth, debris and other unsightly matter shall be removed from such property as soon as practical. Be it further ordained by, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after passage by the Common Council, signing of the president, approval by the signing of the mayor, or by override of any view to the council.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I move this ordinance fourteen dash twenty-one, first and second reading by title, and refer to Council as a whole with the committee meeting scheduled on July fourteenth, seeing that I won't be present at the next council meeting. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Hannah Hosa for first and second reading, putting this in Council as a whole and referring to it, meeting is seven fourteen of fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First and second passes.
Mr. President, that would be our July fourteenth meeting.
Yes, refer to it July fourteenth.
President O'Pinker, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution fourteen R dash eighteen sponsored by Councilman Emerson, a resolution to ensure that POW MIA flags are flown from all municipal flagpoles in the City of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I move for adoption of Resolution fourteen R eighteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Spatelli. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Um, there's a long storied, uh, history, uh, an honorable history of this flag. It, among other things, it's the only flag that can fly at the White House underneath the American flag. No other flag can do that. Um, in regards to, as it affects the city, uh, the crux of the, of the resolution is to have some, uh, consistency in that, obviously, in front of our building, uh, the POW flag is, is there, uh, it, it's not everywhere in the city, uh, not at the civic center, uh, streets, I'm sorry, streets, it is at streets and, uh, recycling for now. Uh, it's just sporadic, and it's not at any fire department, and so the, one of the, uh, underlying pins of the resolution is to be consistent with the POW flag throughout the city.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski. Ulackey.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes, and I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O'Pinker.
Yes, Resolution fourteen R eighteen passes eight zero, one absent.
Item B, Resolution fourteen R dash nineteen sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, a resolution to approve an equipment lease purchase agreement for emergency responder radios.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for final passage of fourteen R nineteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilwoman Vanez, second by Councilman Spatelli on final passage of fourteen R nineteen. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, this will, uh, give approval for, uh, the purchase of Motorola radio equipment for our police and fire. Uh, as the result of the state law requiring that we, uh, must now take part in the E-nine-one-one program, uh, we are, uh, having to purchase, uh, new radio equipment in the amount of one million six hundred thirteen thousand twenty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents. These radios will be compatible with the county, uh, and the old radios that we are currently using, uh, the ones that can be recycled, will be recycled to, um, our streets and park department.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote on fourteen R nineteen.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski.
Ulackey. Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O'Pinker.
Yes, fourteen R nineteen passes eight zero, one absent.
President O'Pinker, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new unfinished business.
President.
Item A. Item A, an attempt to consider reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes for thirteen properties commonly known as all parcels from approximately twenty-four-fifty to twenty-seven-twenty Sheffield Avenue and twenty-four-ten to twenty-six forty, Cayman Avenue, in and around Wolf Lake Memorial Park, sponsored by Councilman O'Pinker, uh, and the petitioner is the Hammond Ford Authority.
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Move for final passage of fourteen fifteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Spatelli, second by Councilman Emerson for final passage of fourteen dash fifteen. Is there any discussion?
President.
Councilman Spatelli.
Work, work that's being done on Sheffield Avenue.
Any other discussion? Clerk Golick roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Calwinski. Ulackey.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Henosa.
Yes.
O'Pinker.
Yes, four, ordinance fourteen fifteen passes eight zero, one absent. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I just want to reiterate on Who's Got Game, the tenth annual three-on-three basketball tournament sponsored by yours truly and, uh, Councilman Higgs, on June twenty-second, it starts at eight A.M., and all the kids play for free and T-shirts, and we'll be giving away bikes, so bring your kids, your grandkids, your great-grandkids, and your kids' kids. A fun-filled day, there'll be vendors out there, food, and just, uh, a fun-filled day, and I'm extremely proud that this is ten years in the making. A lot of hard work, but thanks to Councilman Markovich, he's been there, so I appreciate your efforts, Councilman.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hannah Hosa.
I have a couple of things. Um, one is, uh, on the last rainfall that we had, we had a lot of, we had a lot of floodings, I believe we had like, uh, ninety-eight sewage backups, uh, sixteen with water, uh, it was, uh, in the Hessfeld area alone, uh, there was flooding, uh, from Tennessee all the way to Nebraska. Every sixty-three-hundred block flooded, about a whole block. Every sixty-five-hundred block flooded for a whole block area. Uh, the corner of, uh, the worst area was the corner of, um, uh, Kenwood and Kentucky, which flooded all the way to the houses, and then we had flooding over on, uh, on Maryland Avenue, sixty-six-hundred and sixty-seven-hundred flooded. Uh, therefore, I'd like to, uh, send a letter, motion to send a letter to engineering on the flooding of the Hessfeld area as to their findings and solutions to prevent in the future. I so move.
Second.
It's a motion by Councilman Hannah Hosa, second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter in regarding to the floodings, I believe that was Mother's Day, uh, to engineering. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hannah Hosa.
Yeah, I got, uh, four more. Um, as you know, uh, in the past couple of meetings for the July, for the April twenty-eighth meeting and the May twelfth meeting, uh, and here today is June ninth, this is the third time, uh, I still have not received any, uh, finance reports, uh, on the Festival of the Lakes that we requested for twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, and twenty-thirteen. Therefore, uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to subpoena, uh, Pat Moore and also, uh, Mylan Krosinski for the July fourteenth meeting, which I, because I won't be here on the next meeting, uh, to subpoena them for the July fourteenth meeting, uh, so I, I think that gives adequate, equitable time to, uh, have them, uh, bring those finance reports. I so move.
Attorney Berger, can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Uh, there's a motion by Councilman Hannah Hosa, second by Councilman Higgs.
You didn't hear me say, uh, second that? You didn't hear me say second?
I thought you seconded.
I didn't, not as, as of yet.
Okay. There, there's a motion by Councilman Hannah Hosa, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Higgs to send a letter to, uh, actually subpoena, uh, Pat Moore and Mylan Krosinski in regards to the...
The request for the twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, and twenty-thirteen Festival of the Lakes report.
Twenty-eleven through eleven, twelve, and thirteenth Festival of the Lakes report.
Including the, uh, um, the city controller.
Including the city controller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Clerk Golick, clerk Golick, let's have a roll call vote on that.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spatelli.
No.
Vanez.
No.
Calwinski.
Ulackey.
No.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Henosa.
Yes.
Mr. President.
What, what was the vote? What was your vote?
It was, uh...
I'm on, huh, also, Councilman Hosa.
By the Freedom.
No.
Yes, mine was a yes.
What, what was it?
You were interrupted by Councilman Higgs. What was your vote, Councilman?
I wasn't, he wasn't interrupted by me, I ain't said a word.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't, so you're lying.
Oh, hush.
Mine was a yes.
Yes.
No, you hush.
O'Pinker.
No. Motion fails.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hannah Hosa.
I also sent two other requests for information. Uh, we did get a response from the city controller's office that the, uh, Henry units, uh, that we paid for the, uh, security at the Festival of the Lakes with Henry unit money. I don't know the exact figure, uh, all these years, we've been putting up about seventy-five thousand dollars per, ten percent per councilman, the six districts, the mayor times three, uh, and I was, uh, we were informed at the last meeting that the city controller said that, uh, that the Festival of the Lakes security was paid for by Henry unit money. I'm gonna estimate that around two, uh, around a half million dollars is for the Henry units' money. If you know what the Henry unit money, uh, money is for, uh, we have our regular police, you know, that is paid for out of the budget, and then we have Henry units that, uh, it's, it's for putting extra police in all the districts, so we have extra patrols in our district to maybe prevent... district to maybe prevent something like what happened in Hessville where we had a murder where there was a, a car and apartment building shot up with about forty bullets. I know Councilman Higgs, uh, off of Calumet Avenue, he's had a couple areas where there's been shootings and shots fired, uh, so we need these extra police, uh, from the Henry units in our districts, um, so found out that, uh, if, if, uh, if it's around a half million dollars, I'm gonna estimate that the security of the Festival of the Lakes is probably a quarter million dollars, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and that, uh, it should be paid for out of the festival, if the festival makes money, then you, you, uh, you take it out of the festival. If the festival lost money, then the mayor puts up the other two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from his thirty percent from the casino. So, we're losing police officers in our streets because we're paying for the Hen- we're paying for the Henry, we're paying for the Henry units for the Festival of the Lakes. Therefore, I'd like to subpoena Chief Don, John Doherty and, and, uh, the city controller, uh, I'd like to subpoena them to get information as to why we're using Henry unit money to pay for the festival security. I so move.
It's a motion by Councilman Henoza to subpoena Police Chief JD in regards to the, uh, expenditures of security monies for the Festival of the Lakes. Do I have a second?
For July, this is for July fourteenth.
For July fourteenth. Do I have a second? Motion failed.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I'm gonna say this, and I'm gonna be plain and clear as I possibly can. I am a councilman. I respect all my colleagues on the council. I expect the same courtesy as I give it. For anyone to tell me to shut up like the mayor has done previously, and for my councilwoman at large to bluntly tell me to shut up and disrespect me is unacceptable. I beg you to please, if you cannot say something in regards to the city or something that is positive to me, to refrain from saying anything else to me, and that is my request.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Um, first of all, um, had the councilman been exercising common courtesy, I would not have had to ask him to hush. I did not say shut up, I said hush because he was talking over someone. If we all exercise common courtesy and respect amongst each other, we will not have these little quibbles.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
It's not the first time it happened, and it won't be the last. I'll see you on the campaign trail.
Any other, uh, unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Oh, Councilman, so much look forward to that. Um, uh, I do have a, a statement that I kind of prepared, uh, simply because I didn't want to omit anyone's name. The Ophelia Steen, Steen Center is a building of pride and accomplishment, excuse me, in the third, third district. Some residents of the third district recognized the need for some sprucing up of the grounds at the center, and they contacted me. So on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, a group of volunteers gathered for a cleanup. Home Depot donated mulch, bags, and gloves to the project. I want to thank and acknowledge everyone who participated. Thank you to Simon McCuckin from Home Depot for always supporting projects in the City of Hammond, Mr. Leroy Howard from the Eastside Community Council, and the young people between the ages of sixteen and eighteen who always volunteer for whatever project I request them to help on. Asia Wade, Jada Harkin, precinct committeeman Paul Buck, uh, Devonte Mitchell, Dominique Howard, Dwayne McClendon, Stefan Washington, Marquee Wade, DeSean Scott, Sheldon Stokes, Devion Thorn, Paul Walker, Phil Vanez, Tanashi Benson, Councilman Spitali, Councilman Markovich, and myself, we're all there. Also, Miss Ann Herbert from, uh, the East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch. Thank you all for caring about your community and your efforts to clean up, clean up your neighborhood, and thank you for bringing the project to my attention. Another cleanup project will begin tomorrow morning at the Boys and Girls Club in Hammond across the street from Hammond High. Again, Home Depot is donating materials, and we will be, uh, maybe laying sod, trimming bushes, laying mulch, and planting flowers from the City of Hammond Flower Giveaway. Many of the same volunteers will be at the Boys and Girls Club, but we can always use more help. If you're interested, bring your yard tools and meet us at the Boys and Girls Club at nine AM, which is in the third district. And that is how change happens, one gesture, one person, one moment at a time. I usually, um, uh, use that phrase at the end of the announcement of, at, of the crime watch meetings, but I felt it was so appropriate for those who volunteer throughout the city.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Isn't it amazing that, uh, my colleagues would be in the third district, um, seeing that Councilman Higgs wasn't informed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Vanez.
Um, I'm...
Mr. President, point of order, I still have the floor.
Mr. President.
I still have the floor, point of order.
Councilman Higgs has the floor.
Thank you. As I stated, I was not even informed that this was taking place, but I do applaud the efforts of anyone who takes the initiative to clean up my district. In fact, I have a number of properties that need to be cleaned up, their trees have fell down, and they're so adamant about everything else, but I didn't see anyone step up when it came to Bethany. No one spoke a word in regards to Bethany, how valuable it was to the community, but all of a sudden we're wanting to clean up. Congratulations, thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
It is my turn, correct? Um, I do want to, uh, point out that it is often pointed out when there are problems in different districts that I am councilwoman at large. That means I represent the whole city. Um, as I do at every meeting, I would like to announce a list of the community and crime watch meetings coming up. Uh, the Columbia and Lafayette Crime Watch are going to join forces for the summer. They will meet, uh, Monday, June sixteenth, at, uh, the World Made Flesh Ministries Church at seven hundred Sibley, that will be at six-thirty PM. Uh, the Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June nineteenth, at seven PM, and that is at the Jean Shepherd Center. Um, the South Hammond Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June nineteenth, seven PM, at Hammond Housing. Whiting Roberts Stale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June twelfth, six-thirty PM, that's at the Calumet College. Woodmark Crime Watch will meet at the National Guard Armory on Wednesday, June eleventh, at six PM. Thank you. Mr. President, I would like to continue.
Go ahead.
Um, we had, uh, students here today from the City of Hammond who were, were awarded scholarships. Uh, so often, we only hear of the trouble that kids get into, and it was just such a proud moment to see all of these young people continuing at their education and striving for, um, a, a better way. Um, I have the privilege of serving on the school board of the Hammond Academy of Science and Technology. Through much perseverance, the school finally came to fruition in twenty-ten. This past Thursday was a very historic day at HAST. As you heard Dr. Egan say earlier, that was the very first graduating class of the, um, Hammond Academy of Science and Technology. I just wanted to share with you, um, some stats from that school. HAST had a graduation rate of over ninety percent. They have a ninety-two percent college admission rate, and not including College Bound or the Twenty-First Century Scholarships, they have been, they have been awarded one million one-hundred thirty-one thousand dollars in scholarships. That is phenomenal. We congratulate the many kids, the children who graduated from all of our Hammond schools. You are our future. We applaud your accomplishments, and we look forward to hearing of their triumphs and of the next chapter of their life. Congratulations to all of the graduates.
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I sent a letter to the Board of Works, and I want to send another one into Code Enforcement about the demolition of the property at eleven-thirty-five on One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Place. Uh, it's been vacant, and, uh, the trees are falling down, and the house is abandoned, and it's deplorable, so I so move.
There's a, there's a motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henoza, to send a letter to the Code Enforcement for the...
Code Enforcement, Board of Works.
Board of Works.
Resolve the issue as quickly.
On a house on One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Place for a demo. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Also a property at eight-forty Becker Street, where the tree has fell over the fence and is, uh, jacing to the driveway towards the street that needs to be picked up, and that was the purpose of implementing a new ordinance so that we don't have to look at these type of incidents throughout the city. But I would like, uh, a, uh, letter be sent to the Board of Works as well as to, uh, Code Enforcement to see what we can do to get this, uh, tree removed and get this property demo. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henoza, to send Code Enforcement, Board of Works on a tree removal, and what was that address again, Councilman Higgs?
Eight-forty Becker.
Eight-forty Becker. Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Sent a letter on May twelfth to Hammond Code Enforcement for twenty-seventeen One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Place, which happens to be in my district off Kennedy Avenue, where the property is being neglected. I would like Code Enforcement to inspect it and give me a feasibility study as to how and what they are doing to rectify the situation. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Henoza, to send a letter in the House on One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Place to Code Enforcement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Have a correspondence for various properties, uh, it says, "Councilman Higgs, uh, pursuant to their recent requests, I'm providing you a status on Columbia Avenue Business Park, fifty-eight fifty-one, Calumet Avenue, formerly Kentucky Fried Chicken Restaurant, and fifty-eight twenty Calumet Avenue, formerly Burger King Restaurant. The Columbia Avenue Business Park was submitted to the RDA as a project for the Brownfield Coalition Resolving Loan Grant Program. Congratulations. The property has been listed with a real estate broker, however, without a developer for the property, it does not meet the program criteria. I am frequently communicating with the real estate broker regarding the interest in the property, the property located at fifty-eight fifty-one. Calumet Avenue is also listed on the real estate broker, and the property is given a site opinion to restaurant prospects looking for space that meets the building specifications. I recognize the deteriorating efforts of a vacant building may cause, therefore I am continuously seeking options for this building. I have been in communication with the property on a fifty-eight twenty Calumet Avenue, and I will speak with her regarding programs which can assist with the development of the property. I have recently reached out to her regarding the development status, and I am awaiting a response respectfully, Africa Kay Tower, Director of Economic Development."
Any other new unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henoza.
I'd just like to remind the audience, uh, hopefully the tape doesn't get cut off, but, uh, I think we made history here tonight. I think the, uh, the citizens, the, the citizens, the residents of Hammond should know how we're spending our money, uh, even our casino money, and we just, this, this council just voted five to three, uh, that, uh, anybody that wants to know, uh, did we make any money for the Festival of the Lakes for twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen? It was voted no by five councilmen, in other words, it ain't none of your business how much the Festival, uh, of the Lakes made. Uh, I think it is, I think, uh, we should have accountability, we should know where our casino money is, uh, and, uh, we have five councilmen that voted no, uh, that you should know this information, and that was, that was Councilman Spitali, Councilman Emerson, Councilman Ulaki, and, uh, Councilwoman Vanez, and Council President, uh, Opinker voted that you should know how much, uh, the Festival of, uh, the Lakes made for twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Um, the Festival of the Lakes has been going on, I believe this is going to be the tenth year, uh, and in due respect to my colleague, uh, why were these questions not answered in years prior? Why was there no curiosity about what was, uh, going on with the Festival of the Lakes? But it's obvious from, uh, some of the activity here this evening that we are approaching election season, and, um, uh, next year are the municipal elections, and there's going to be a lot of grandstanding. Um, I, if, if there was a valid reason why, other than political, that there was a question about the finances of the Festival of the Lakes, I would have been in favor of that. Um, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Uh, with regard to, uh, um, uh, Councilman Henoza's letter earlier regarding the flooding that occurred in Hessville, uh, I do want to point out to the residents of Hessville that the flooding was discussed in great detail at the mayor's night out, which was on, uh, May twenty-eighth. If anybody is interested in hearing from each of the city departments, uh, exactly what happened, uh, with that event, you can visit gohammond.tv, and you can view the, uh, mayor's night out from that particular evening. Uh, and I do have one more thing, Mr. President. Um, at the last council meeting, we, uh, voted to, um, extend College Bound through the year, uh, twenty-twenty-five, and the question was asked, uh, by Councilman Higgs, how many students are coming back to Hammond? So, for the councilman and for, um, public consumption, I pulled out the report that we received, and, um, fifty-six percent of, uh, the College Bound students do return to Hammond after graduation with several purchasing properties in Hammond. Sixty-six percent of the students completed college in four years, with another twenty-three percent graduating or anticipating graduating in five years. Forty-two percent of the College Bound students are seeking graduate degrees, including seven MBAs, a doctor of osteopathy, a law degree, a master's in engineering, and a master's in chemistry. Um, I've said it before, and I will say it again, I believe that College Bound is money well-spent for, uh, some of our young people in the City of Hammond. It will give them an opportunity to attend college, uh, when they perhaps may have not had that opportunity before, so thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Um, first and foremost, I would like to say that, uh, as being the third district councilman, I don't just work at election time, I work year-round. Secondly, uh, as it relates to anything that is financially, uh, accountable in, in regards to going on within our city, it's all of our responsibility to find out, and if Councilman Henoza has a question, it shouldn't be a problem to get the answers. Whether he chooses to run for something or not, that's his decision, but if any of us on here request information, it should be given, and it shouldn't be a question as to whether or not someone's planning on doing something, the bottom line, we have to be accountable to our constituents, and it's sad that you make a request, and a lot of times, and he, it's not the first time I've made requests, and it takes months and months to get it. I've made requests and it takes months and months to get it, for what I cannot answer. But at the end of the day, we are all responsible. These are our constituents. We work for them. Bottom line. So to say that just because it may be, we may be going into a political year, he can't ask a question or get answers to something that we're financially responsible for is wrong. And if there's nothing to hide, bring it on. That's what I say. Bring it on. What's the problem? It shouldn't be a problem. The problem is that the majority of people that sit on this council were not elected by the people. That's the problem.
Any other unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Hannah Hosa.
I think we just found out from this five to three vote that the Festival of the Lakes is protected. I believe that we should have accountability, and this is not political, this is accountability. Why are we hiding how much the Festival of the Lakes made for the past three years? Okay, well, let's go back ten years. Let's get some figure. What are we hiding? I mean, I think the citizens of Hammond should know how our city is spending the money. I mean, nothing wrong with the festival. I love the festival myself.
Nothing.
But I love it, but let's have accountability. That's, accountability is not political. Accountability is something that, uh, it should be given to all the citizens of Hammond. It should be given to all these councilmen over here. But to vote five to three, uh, in other words, it's none of your business how much the festival made or lost. That is wrong.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
I will say this, on June 8th, there was an editorial in the paper, and I apologize, I don't have it because I had planned to read it for you tonight, Chico. But it gave you an outline of the expenditures and what they spent a portion of the money on and what the mayor said. So if you can pull that up on northwestindiana dot times, you could probably pull up that editorial in regards to the festival. It was something in the paper in regards to that, but it doesn't answer all the questions that are being requested. And that's what I'm saying. All they basically gave you an outline of what was spent and parking is fifteen dollars and the majority, and how much they spend for entertainment. But they couldn't give you a definite number as to what they're paying for each entertainer. But they gave you an outline of what. And also, there was a quote in there from the mayor saying that if they don't make money, they just want to break even. So that's what was stated.
Any other unfinished business? Unfinished business is now closed. Public expression. Our first speaker of the night will be Carlotta King.
It's Carlotta Blake King. Um, I was not able to attend the last Mayor's Night Out and I had every intention to attend regarding the flooding, so that's why I'm here tonight. Uh, I did call the City of Hammond and spoke to several departments and was able to get someone out to look at my home regarding the sewage, you know, the total mess. And, uh, as I spoke to the people, I reminded them of a Mayor's Night Out I attended two years ago when this happened, that they indicated that there was a five hundred dollar money or whatever grant that homeowners could receive if there was something that could prevent it. So I, um, we asked the gentleman, what did he think? And he really, he didn't know anything about the five hundred dollars. He didn't know anything. So I would just hope, you know, I've called, we've asked about this five hundred dollar, if it is, if it's not, but they publicly said at the Mayor's Night Out two years ago that there is a five hundred dollar grant to be given if, uh, if you get a plumber and you find that it can, you know, they can do something to prevent the water from continually coming in your home. That's my simple question.
Mr. Chairman, I can possibly answer. Well, you were at the meeting, so...
Yes. What is, it's a program, um, it's a check valve that they put in and you have the work done and the city will reimburse you up to five hundred dollars once that check valve is installed.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, engineering would know. You'd call the engineering department, they would know.
I missed that. I spoke to the coast and no one seems to know what happened.
Mr. President.
It's frustrating.
Mr. President.
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, Ms. King, I would do everything in my power to look into this particular issue. Hopefully, we won't get sidetracked in regards to getting the information as it relates to the flooding. But also, at the last meeting, I personally made a request that an action plan be put in place. So in the future, when we have flooding, we know exactly what resources are available, where we need to go, and who to call. I've been requesting that since the initial flood a number of years ago when we were neglected and I had to send a letter to the governor of the state of Indiana and we got FEMA because I couldn't get any help. You know, this flood was not nearly as bad as that one, but certainly, uh, you know, something needs to be put in place so that my constituents and the residents of this great city have an avenue or a resource to go to when certain things like this occur in our city.
Next speaker of the evening will be Mr. George Doya. Okay, the last speaker of the evening will be Alvin Cheeks. Mr. Alvin Cheeks. Mr. Cheeks?
Oh, I thought you was... Alvin Cheeks, 832 Merrill Street. First of all, I'd like to thank Dance for Sally and Councilman Higgs. Over the weekend, I fed over three hundred people, raised six thousand dollars for youth in our area to enjoy Great America. From my understanding, they're there because my son hasn't called me, so I'm assuming they're enjoying Great America. Um, the reason why I'm standing before you is in regards to trash in my area. Um, me and my son, we go out, we pick up trash. We've had floods in our area. We don't receive dumpsters anymore, so people put out large amounts of trash. The trash pickups are very slow in my district. My alleys look like a third world country. But I don't just talk about my alleys. I go out with tree saws when there's floods. I've even pumped out several district councilmen, several employees. I've pumped their basements out for free and put the stuff out and me and my team, we didn't accept a dime. What I hate is, is that we are not getting the service that we should. I understand we have a 311. I'm not a computer guy, but I had someone that is and that response time is good. But those people work for us, you know, and it's just getting atrocious. And I'm just telling people, I'm gonna start stepping on toes and anybody that don't want their toes stepped on, take them from up under the table. Those people that work in the street department or Board of Works, whatever they call, they work for us. Our alleys are atrocious. They've never looked like this, never in the history of Hammond. I challenged the council to go out and take a look at them. You can make a response time, you know, I know what's happening. I'm gonna give it a break for now, but all I'm saying is, I don't want to live in a third world country. I want to live in a nice community like everyone else. I do my part. I get on my son about going around picking up other people's stuff, but the people that work for the city and that's getting paid, they need to get from up under the trees, sleeping, get from their houses in the daytime and pick up my trash because I'm gonna expose them because I'm sick of the trash. I'm sick of the slow response signs. It doesn't have to happen in our city and it's happening. We have a clean environment, you know, and our seniors and our kids have a beautiful environment this summer, but if they're not picking up and responding, that's not fair to us. We pay for it. So I'm sick of it. You know, I just cleaned up another whole alley today. It's atrocious, you know? It, it's just... And the last thing I want to say, we have a lot of potholes in the City Hall parking lot and one person tripped today, so I would ask the council to please ask them to fix the potholes in the City Hall parking lot where a senior or someone with a K does not fall. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could respond a little bit...
Councilman Higgs.
Uh, Alvin, I know that particular property on Field Street, because I monitor the alleys, street sidewalks, the whole nine. That particular property, I don't know if someone's buying it or what, and that trash that's in the alley. I don't know why they didn't...
It's gone, Councilman.
Let me finish. Let me please finish. I don't know if, why they didn't get a dumpster, if they purchased the property or what, but I think it was, um, a large amount of things that were placed out there. And when I spoke to the person to get it retrieved, his boss said that they were going to Code Enforcement. So that's all I know in regards to that.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking about that one. I brought out my own personal back hall, Councilman Higgs. All of that trash is gone because I was sick of the games that they played with the residents. I'm sick of the employee who, I'm just telling you...
Well, Alvin...
You know the kind of guy I am. I'm only, when I have the facts for them and when I have it on film and tape, I'm gonna present it to this council. But I'm only presenting it as a warning that how our alleys look, they're not gonna be like that all summer.
Well, thank you. I applaud your efforts, Alvin. Let me finish and just say this. What you're bringing up today has been going on for a number of years.
That is correct.
And I continuously send letters requesting that certain things take place, and sometimes it takes a while for whatever reason. I don't know if it's because this particular area we live in, are they overlooking us or what? But I can assure you, as, let me finish, please. As the councilman, I continuously send letters. There's no other councilman that's sent as many letters as I do in regards to particular issues within the district. It's constant and I make phone calls. And all I can tell you is that if there's a particular area that you're concerned about, call my office and Debbie and I will address it immediately. That's all I can tell.
Thank you. You guys can discuss this after the meeting, okay?
Okay.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilman Hannah Hosa, second by Councilman Spitali. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.